Councilmember Loche.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks a bunch. All right. One item as we had just what, two nights ago. Consideration of Resolution 2011-19 adoption of maximum amount for the Town of Fountain Hills fiscal year 11/12 tentative budget with appropriate direction to publish said documents in accordance with state law. Council may address any or all items contained in this budget document and initiate any changes prior to adoption. So we've obviously had our some presentations at our last meeting. We won't be too redundant there and probably now go to the public and see if we have some folks who want to get some public feedback and then we can start our dialogue and then turn it over to staff. Does that sound good to you guys? All right, great. And if you haven't filled out a speaker card, please do so as we hear from the other folks in the public.
Mayor, we have four speakers. Mr. Frank Ferrara followed by Lynda Kavanaugh.
Welcome, Ms. Ferrara.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just want to actually don't want to say too much. Just want to recap what I heard last night, or not last night, Monday night. Recap on the liquor fees is what I, the sense that I got from all the discussion. I wrote down some notes and I just want to make sure that I put them at least in the record or somewhere. So maybe I'm right, maybe I'm wrong, but I think I'm right because I write them down. First of all, liquor fees. This is as of the 23rd meeting. What I heard during the meeting was there would be an application fee which would be determined because of that night it went from 200 to 750, I believe, or 250 to 750. To be determined, it would be charged new licensee on a one-time basis. No recurring fees for current licensees. Retroactive beginning this fiscal year. The word retroactive was used several times during the discussion, so I took it to mean that that probably would be to this fiscal year and that none of the current licensees would be charged. The fee and those that have paid, as I understand it from what I heard, would be reimbursed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrara. Next was Ms. Lynda Kavanaugh. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was really glad to read in the Times that you're considering eliminating the proposal for the telecommunications tax. Our town is just starting to recover. Confidence is returning as evidenced by residents shopping more in our stores and a few new businesses have opened. Raising taxes is not a solution in a recovering economy and making the tax increase the foundation of the budget proposal sent the wrong message to businesses, consumers, and taxpayers alike. More options should have been presented from the beginning so that the taxpayers had a true picture of the budget and the town economy. While I was able to meet privately with Julie today to have my budget questions from Monday's meeting answered, it's unfortunate that those questions couldn't have been discussed at the meeting when I asked them so that all of the taxpayers could have heard them. Thank you.
Is there another speaker? Public?
Yes. Jean Slecta followed by Dave Link.
Welcome, Ms. Slecta.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jean Slecta. First of all, I would like to recognize the efforts of the town staff for the great work they did in assembling this budget. Clearly, they spent many, many hours gathering tremendous amounts of information and brainstorming to produce working documents that all of you on the council find valuable in making some really tough decisions. So I don't have lots of thoughts to pass along, but I have one. And this may have been covered in prior meetings held on the budget, so I apologize if it has been. I applaud the proposal to examine the benefits of restructuring the debt in the town hall. It is an excellent long-term strategy and that topic made me think about a related subject. Why are we not looking at the possibility of reducing the area occupied by town functions? I'll make a few points worth thinking about. One, how common is it for a town or city to house a staff and public safety on the major commercial retail street in the town center? Would Tempe put theirs on Mill? Would Mesa put theirs on Main Street? Would Scottsdale put theirs on Scottsdale Road? No, theirs are in the city centers but a block or so off the commercial heart of the city centers. That allows for a city government presence that would continue to bring people downtown, encourage employees to continue to eat and shop downtown, but not take away valuable commercial property. Two, the town hall was conceived, planned, and built during a time when we expected unabated growth for the town. It wasn't planned for only 59 employees. It wasn't even planned for 88 employees. I'm sure it was planned for gradual increasing staff size. Of course, we know that many employees don't even work in the town hall. Three, I'm sure if we were now planning a new town hall, we would look at the potential overlaying functions. For example, the community center could be used to include town staffs and meetings such as the town council, planning and zoning commissions, etc. Just look at the council chamber. It's very, very nice, but in these times of economic difficulty and with the recognition that the future holds continued belt tightening, we need to think a bit more out of the box regarding facilities. We have a two-story building right on the avenue, right on the corner, that would be perfect for first-floor retail and second-floor offices. And it could generate rental income and/or additional tax revenue. Four, I would suggest that the Internet has already changed the town staff's way of doing business dramatically. We know that fewer trips to the town hall are required for citizens as they can do business online to some extent. Will that not continue to grow? Will staff be able to work from home in many cases in the future? The work-from-home concept is pervasive in the private sector. So since we're looking for long-term, looking at the long-term at our debt, let's include some plans to address facilities alternatives and the future needs for space. I can tell you as a former employee of the town that office space is exceptional, much greater than what I experienced in the private sector. I know there is a cost to implement the facilities changes, but I see no reason to believe that we will ever need that much staff space.
Go for it, continue if you want. Another one?
I can't, well, I'm basically, I cannot speak for public safety, but at least they don't need to be on the main commercial street downtown either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slecta.
Mr. Link?
Welcome, Mr. Link.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. About a month ago, I received in the mail from the Town of Fountain Hills an invoice for $1,000 for a liquor license renewal fee. On the surface, this raised a lot of questions in my mind as to what it was for, number one, and also how the fee structure came about, number two. That prompted a call from me to the state liquor board. And upon that call to the liquor board, they came back and told me that, number one, they were unaware of any kind of enforcement activity that the town would, in any township around the valley. They were unaware of any kind of enforcement activity that the town provides or maintenance of records or background checks. So that's what I paid the state for when I originally went through and got my liquor license. My renewal fee to the state every month or every year is $175. The renewal fee that I'm being asked by the Town of Fountain Hills is $1,000. It's a 571% increase over what the state's charging me. Not only that, but when you look at the fee structure for what Town of Fountain Hills has set up versus the state, when you come to a, when you come to a restaurant, a restaurant that serves hard alcohol takes on more risk, the state charges them about four times more for the license and for the renewal fee than they do for myself. Town of Fountain Hills and their fee structure charges about $250 less for those people that have hard alcohol in a restaurant environment. So I also went and pulled some additional facts and I took five townships around the valley. And for a beer and wine license such as myself, when I looked at Scottsdale, Tempe, Gilbert, Glendale, and Phoenix, averaged them together, it showed that the Town of Fountain Hills on average is about 37% higher for their liquor license renewal fees in all of those townships. Now, that may not seem like an awful lot, but when you consider the population of those townships compared to Fountain Hills, there's a lot more opportunity for revenue in those areas than there is in Fountain Hills, with an average population of about 163,000 people less than those townships average together. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that for a small business such as myself in Fountain Hills, it took me almost seven to eight months to renegotiate rent reductions with my landlord, and that's gone in one fell swoop by having this license imposed upon, this license renewal fee imposed upon me. Thanks for taking the time to listen.
Thanks, Ms. Link. Another speaker?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Julie or Rick? Anything to add before we get started and maybe address first these items? Or if you have something to present to us, we can hit that first.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to be here with you today to get a lot of things accomplished today. First of all, what we want to address is the, and what I will do is address the, what we call the census gap or the deficit that we've been struggling with for the last couple of months, closing the budget. We're pleased that our current proposal to you does represent a balanced budget. Next, we're going to have Julie discuss some specifics regarding the fee schedule based on the feedback we received the other night. Paul and Mark are here to discuss the capital projects plan for next year and answer any general questions that you have. We have staff here to answer any questions that may come up after. And of course, we look forward to setting that maximum expenditure limit tonight so we can go on with the rest of the budget schedule. First of all, and I will be very brief with this, we had a challenge as a budget committee to develop a solution that would fill an over half-million-dollar shortfall this year. Our first solution that we brought forward from the budget committee was an increase in the telecommunications slash utilities tax and also restructuring of debt service. We felt like this was a solution that would cover both the deficit this year and provide some sustainable revenue for the future. Another plan was brought forward. We did our homework on that and developed this into a solution that we now bring to you here tonight. And the current proposal suggests paying $2.9 million off of city hall or town hall debt, mostly those funds coming from general government impact fees, reserves, debt service reserves, and the capital projects fund. In addition to that, we're proposing the restructuring of debt service on the community center that would result in about $193,000 in annual savings and then external service contract reductions or community service contract reductions of 20%, which will result in a savings of approximately $71,000, the total being $614,500 in annual savings. And so at this time, this is the proposal that you have before you. We're ready to move forward with that. If you have any questions with regard to that specific initiative, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Thanks, Rick. I think what I would like to clarify is what is needed tonight?
We need nothing specific to this initiative. We will need, of course, at the end of the evening to set the maximum limit and we'll have to anticipate then the expenditure of $2.9 million to pay off debt as part of that resolution in the end of the night. So that's all we need, nothing at this point though, Mayor.
Apart from discussion and obviously we're going to cover.
Excuse, yeah, exactly. Feedback.
What is needed tonight is the move on the resolution we have before us. Thanks, Rick. Councilmember Loche.
Rick, I just, I had a question for you. When did staff start the budget process?
Generally, it's interesting. We begin, we begin formulating a schedule in August and begin meeting with the council in October. We have had meetings as early as September. So it's generally about a month to two months after we close this budget process.
So it's a longstanding process?
Yeah, at least 10 months.
It's an iterative process. Is it fair to say things change as you move through that process?
Like night and day, yeah, sure.
Exactly. And with respect to the telecommunications tax, was that on the table from the get-go?
We talked about assembling a revenue toolbox that would include not only that option but also some other options. In fact, the council asked us to look into also a storm system utility fee as well. As part of this revenue toolbox, that certainly would be part of that, but it was never part of a budget solution or proposal from the beginning.
And when did it become part of the budget proposal and solution?
Once we discovered that we were going to be hit by the census, the way we were.
By the census? And were there any other activities that moved the staff in that direction to consider a telecommunications tax? Was there other loss of revenue? And if so, where was that loss of revenue from?
Well, sure. There was also a decrease in state shared revenue that we had already projected to the tune of about $400,000. And we also considered some of the services that we had scaled back, including wash maintenance and some of the maintenance items that have already been shared with the public and with this group.
Okay. And at any time during that process, did council agree to a telecommunications tax?
No.
Mayor, just one more question. Okay. And where are we at now with the telecommunications tax?
Where it remains a part of a toolbox that council can consider in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council before we go through some items that were brought up from the public? All right, good. We'll put a couple of them together, particularly the liquor license items. Before we go there, we could first talk about the ideas brought up by one of the citizens about reducing areas here at town hall, being on a main road, considering facilities in other places, work being done now more through the Internet, and the quality of the office environment being quite good. I think the ideas are great to come forward. Obviously, these things, if we were to go into further consideration, would take a lot of time to consider different options, but I think everything's always on the table in the budget season. So this, the feedback that this citizen shared certainly is one that I think a lot of places are going to consider as we move forward in budgets for years to come, how to best utilize space. With a move from the rental area that the town had before here saved money and obviously gave us a lot more to work from. So I think that was a good decision. Do we expect the economy to drop to where we have 58 or, you know, who knows where we'll be in the future, obviously, when construction in particular picks up, that we need for more staff in those areas? But I'm not sure, I think that's something to absorb. I don't know if council wants to talk more about that, but that's something good to absorb. Moving to a space outside of town hall with some employees, obviously, will then have us renting space. It may not be too terribly expensive, but it would obviously not be free, so there'd be certainly still a cost. I don't see any tremendous areas to consider in that area during this budget discussion, but I think that's one of those things to keep top of mind and I encourage the public to bring those items forward, particularly those people that are familiar with things specifically, as Mr. Slecta was. I'm not sure I had a whole lot of questions outside of the liquor area, but let me see if I can extrapolate some more here. There were some questions that were discussed with staff or their, of recent, maybe it was today, or their items that came from that discussion to be beneficial for the public or the council that hear related to discussions that were shared that would have been good if they were, had they been in public or had opportunity to be in public. And obviously, there's call to the public, there's dialogue, there's email. We're in the budget process. Everything is on the table, so if there's something out there that should be discussed, I would hope folks would bring it forward. Was there, it was alluded to that there sounded like there were some things that should be considered that we're not considering tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We did have a very good meeting this morning with Lynda Kavanaugh and myself. I think one of the things that came out of it that maybe we could have been more clear with is she had several questions and as we struggle with this program budgeting versus line item budgeting, you know, we have consistently said that there is no increases in staff pay, but if you look at the individual departments or you look at the individual divisions, it looks like there is an increase in wages. And what, the result of that or the cause of that is as we move people between programs, they may move between divisions or they may even move between funds. And so that does give the appearance that there is an increase in wages when actually it's just shifting around. So what we probably could have presented was here's a total budget for salaries for the whole entire town in one number to see where it is. So I think we could do a better job with that, but hopefully that question was answered this morning. But we would be happy to provide more information to the council, to the public, to, you know, make sure that they're comfortable knowing that there are no increases.
I think that is good with the budget programming when you have functions moved. A body has moved to doing more functions in another area just even by a incremental percentage. That department may have more spending in the area of wages. So no individuals were given raises not over the last or since '08, '09, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So it's just the program budgeting and how that obviously has its benefits, but it can be confusing when some of the percentages move over to another work area. It looks like that area may have higher wages, but in fact, the other area would have gone down.
Exactly.
Okay. That helps. Councilmember Hanson?
Paul provided some really good information of the individuals in his department that made it a lot more clear. And he actually used the position and so it gave me a better idea organizationally how things were being moved. Maybe somebody was moving to code enforcement and it gave a good explanation and I think that type of thing is real helpful.
Cool. So that's something perhaps we can get ahead of next time and because it is a question that always comes up, wages. You know, Heather, whenever there's a discussion of wages being increased, even if you end up not doing it, people are sensitive to that and that seems to be a big question. So that is maybe good, good feedback. Other item was more options should have been considered. Were there any other options shared that maybe should be considered that we might want to have a discussion about?
Mayor, members of the council, when we first started the executive budget committee and had the meetings, you know, all the options in our toolboxes were actually put out there and considered and some of them were just not viable, they were not sustainable, they didn't make any sense for what we were trying to do. So we felt like we looked at all the options, but again, some of them didn't make it beyond the budget committee meeting because it wouldn't make sense. It may sound good, but it really wouldn't be good policy or good management to bring it forward.
Okay. Obviously, there have been things brought up by public and from every which direction that we consider. So I encourage citizens to bring forward specific good ideas if they want us to consider The recovery, no time for raising taxes, I think is more of a comment, but it could be turned into a form of a question. And there are places that do raise taxes when revenues are decreased, particularly to the degree that ours has been year over year. We thought we made cuts a year ago that were quite dramatic and then we had, then we had to make more cuts this year, yeah, because the revenues came in that much lower. But as you went over in your presentation, there's always the, you always have a revenue option and a expenditure option, you know, reduce expenses or raise revenues as you went over. So that's always part of the discussion, but I agree that people, you know, you look back at cutting the fountain runtime as a discussion item to reduce costs. That gets a lot of people's attention. Raising taxes gets a lot of people's attention, but it's a function of government. It's something that we always look at as far as making sure we can, we have the revenue to afford the quality of life that the folks in our community want on the whole. So through that and through the discussions and because of you folks keeping us on top of things, you had to bring forward some revenue options for us to consider and, but we've done a lot of good work here and we found some savings, we found some areas to cut, but you've also warned us that the areas we cut in might continue to hurt our infrastructure. We're putting off a lot of the things that was a great idea to bring up the items that we've been putting off. And we're putting them off because we're not bringing in additional revenue to bring us back to at least where we were last year or thereabout. So at some point, I think the community would get, we'd get into a spending level where the quality of life starts to degrade to a point where they may not want us to cut further and a revenue option might be considered. But it's incredible how far we've come down in spending and what we still have. But we are putting off a lot of items. I think Councilmember Loche brought up that we put off a lot of items as far as spending because we don't have the revenue and we chose not to raise taxes. But it's got to be on the, it's, everything's on the table during the budget. That's the point, you know, revenues and cutting expenditures further. Most of the folks that have been, that have come to the public have got to be very pleased that we've made the decisions we have or seemingly have made those decisions we have by continuing to reduce our expenses and not raising taxes. I think we're on to liquor unless there's something else related, not related to liquor that we want to address that the citizens may have brought up. Let's see, have I received something in writing? I can't remember if there was another option that I received in writing, but we do have before us again tonight the cost from the variety of different cities on a variety of different series numbered liquor licenses. But Mr. Link also mentioned, you know, he received his annual fee in an invoice and he talked about what the state liquor board does, but he also alluded to the town doesn't do anything for the, in relation to liquor licenses. And perhaps with the renewals, there isn't much of anything done other than sending out an invoice. But on the front end, what is done on the front end by the community or the town?
Mayor, members of the council, on the front end with a liquor license application, there is a lot of review that has, a review process that has to happen. It has to go to law enforcement, it has to go to public work, it has to go to all the divisions and departments, and then obviously it has to be prepared and presented to the council. As far as the annual renewal, again, the philosophy is not what work we do internally with staff, but it was more the impact of the alcohol on the community. And the county obviously does not enforce any of those laws in a local community. The county processes the paperwork, they do the initial background checks, but they don't enforce the laws or have to deal with the effects of liquor establishments where there may be a high number of police calls. That's the theory behind it. And so that's why cities and towns are typically higher than the county.
And as mentioned, that we're 37% higher based on the five averages and I wouldn't argue that. We've got an average here for the cities and then ours there and it does appear a little bit higher on most of the items. We didn't have a liquor license fee at all up until two years ago and I don't think it was charged until this, this last year. So we have had a liquor license fee being realized by our businesses for about a year now. But the other cities and towns do charge an annual fee that you've got on here, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you know how they arrive at those numbers?
I do not. We, you know, we started this process, I want to say, four or five years ago when we, you know, did the survey of the other cities and towns, which is how we originally arrived at the fees. And then, of course, we did the survey again more recently to see what those fees were compared to ours. And some of them we are higher. So, but we didn't call them and ask them, how did you arrive at those fees?
Do you think they have more processing that, or staff work they have to put into each year to reallocate or charge these fees? Do you think they, they don't have different statute, statutory responsibilities than we do, correct?
I would believe that to be correct. Again, they come through the Department of Liquor. They don't come to the town directly. Everything comes from the Department of Liquor. And then we have 60 days, we have our, a time period that we have to respond and get it to the council.
So I'm going to assume, and I think it's probably pretty safe, is that these towns and cities, most of, most, almost all of them have chose to charge a dollar amount from $2,000 to $25 and everything in between based on what they feel largely their impact is probably into the community, probably based along the lines of what you were, you alluded to, the impact of alcohol sales, the type of business in our community to recapture cost. I mean, most of them are a little higher on the bar and all spirituous liquors and a little lower on restaurants, you know, to that extent. So I guess that's all I can assume on that item. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, I have a question about the part between selling all liquor and then just being beer and wine. And maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but the Series 6 looks like it's for selling all, all types of liquor. And that one was $1,200 and the one for beer and wine was $1,000. Is that right?
In our community today?
Yes.
Yes.
So the beer and wine one is less than the one with the hard liquor?
Correct.
And again, if the mayor, if the state charges more for hard liquor and the reasoning being because of whatever services and the reasoning being because of whatever services they feel are more necessary for that, then we would be actually going along with whatever that decision-making was because ours is the same. It's more if there's hard liquor. Okay. And Mayor, the, um, the other thing about the, the renewals, do the, um, the other business licenses in town, do they renew every year?
Uh, Mayor, members of council, yes. The business licenses renews every year.
Okay, and so these, um, would have a business license renewal and a liquor license renewal. Is there anything that, Mayor, that's similar to that, that other businesses have that they have to renew also?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm trying to think. Dog license, but that's an individual owner. I can't think of a business, the only two invoices we send out that are automatic renewals are business license and now liquor license.
Okay, so and then Mayor, uh, the state-
Dog license for individuals.
Having a renewal every year, even if they don't have to redo all the paperwork, the state still has a renewal every year. And the vast majority of these cities and towns. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think that's, just to be clear, it looks like when it was set up two years ago, generally, even though we may, most of us may have been unclear that it was going to be a recurring charge, maybe we would have had more discussion at that time. It generally follows kind of what the other cities and towns do. Some are higher based on, you know, there being bars and restaurants are lower and then everything in between generally. Councilmember Hanson.
Maybe the first thing we want to do is decide if we're going to have renewals or we're not going to have renewals, rather than trying to decide on dollar amounts. And the fact that we're basing this on a theory and not substantial data, I have hard prob, I have a hard time with that. I have a hard time with doing this now to the businesses. And I thought last night we were kind of moving in the direction of a one-time new license fee of in the range of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to five-hundred dollars and no renewal fee. And I know a lot of what we do, we say, well, every other city and town is doing it, but that doesn't mean that we have to do it too. We have the option of not doing it. So I guess I'd like to just see how we feel on that part of it.
I know this has been a lengthy discussion on liquor licenses. But I was really bringing them up because they were brought up by the public. So that's why I was going re, kind of rehashing because some of these items were discussed at pretty good length. Mayor. The other night, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Cantino.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think the one thing that, I think it's Mr. White. Is that right? Huh? Lee? Link, I'm sorry. The one thing that I think maybe was overlooked is the recurring charges for a hundred dollars a year for health inspection. So the county bills you another hundred dollars a year for that. And the other thing is too, is, and I know, I, the health department I dealt with when I had the food bank, the other thing was escam when we were on the radio. They charge you a hundred dollars an annual fee because it's entertainment. And they want to make sure all their people are covered in royalties. So the people that have TV sets in their restaurants have to pay a hundred dollars. So there's two-hundred dollars more fees that the restaurants and other establishments have to pay annually. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I, I feel like the liquor-serving establishments need to pay for their own service. I, I can cite examples of, of the sheriff's department going to local establishments three and four times over the last twelve months. And, and they need to be able, I mean, they should be paying for that. We, the general public shouldn't. And that's what the renewal fee is actually covering is the service that is provided when, when the sheriff's department is called in.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Alkey.
Julie, just a couple, couple questions. Prior to the change in the liquor license application and renewal fees two years ago, what would a liquor establishment or a bar or restaurant that served liquor or wine, what would they pay?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tate, they wouldn't pay anything to the town. There was no charge for application or, or annual renewal prior to January one of this year.
Okay, so there's never any fees prior to that in the town's history?
Not related to liquor, correct.
Okay, so the only thing that they would pay perhaps would be, well, certainly would be the business license that they, they would have to pay, correct?
Correct.
Each year, Julie, is there anything that you receive from the Department of Liquor as far as an update that a particular liquor license holder still has that license? Is there anything that the town receives after the initial approval from the Department of Liquor Licensing Control?
Not that I'm aware of. The liquor licenses are available on the website and we go on there and check to make sure, see who still has a valid liquor license.
So, so is that, is that the mechanism that is built in that there's a staff member that goes on and checks those annually?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Mayor, I, I am, you know, as I said two nights ago, I would reiterate that, you know, a one-time perhaps application fee, as I had suggested, of five hundred dollars. There may be some value in having an extremely nominal annual fee of maybe five dollars just to make sure that, you know, we're touching base again with the liquor license holders to make sure that they're still held by the same person or just an application that needs to be submitted, perhaps we don't even have to have a fee with that. Just, I'd like to see some type of annual application with that, not just a one-time, here's your liquor license or we've, we've approved it, so to speak. And then I'd like to see something even in the way of an application, like a business license, not necessarily where it has to be a fee associated with it, but just to make sure that those things are being looked at at least once a year.
Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think that we contract with MCSL for the reason of enforcement and law. And I think that part of that contract is their obligation to go out when someone calls, when someone's in trouble, whether in the, they're in a liquor store, whether they're in a restaurant, wherever it is. We don't say anything when we have family disturbances or a spouse gets beat up. It's just normal. And I think the other calls are the same way. So I feel like that is it, and I'm, I am not one for fees. I think that we have a hard enough time trying to keep ourselves going, so I will not be in favor of any fees. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't really see us adding another level of government by having an application fee for a license that we do not issue. It's a state-issued license. And we, all we do is when we get the license, the council doesn't even really approve it. They forward it with a positive or a negative recommendation. They only recommend regarding the license. So I, I can't see us giving staff another, here's another project to do, coming up with a, another form of a license and, and even charging a nominal fee.
Thank you. Now, on the front end, just to be clear, we, there is, and then that was, I think, the whole gist for the discussion two years ago, was to try to recapture costs as we talked about the other night. So I think good discussion. What I'll look to, see, see if we can maybe set staff in a direction that's largely agreeable, although we don't really need a motion, just it'll be, end up being a part of the budget, is perhaps to increase our initial application fee from the twenty-five dollars except for those special temporary licenses that are, I think, at twenty-five. We don't want to, or they may be at zero. I don't want to increase those. But the, increase the existing application fee from the twenty-five dollars to half of what we charge today on an annual fee and eliminate the annual fee.
Um, Mayor, if I could reiterate what you just said so that I understand, what you're suggesting is that the application fee be different for each series?
Correct.
Okay, so we would have an application fee if it's a, the current renewal is a thousand, the application fee in that case would be five hundred?
No, maybe that's not right because it's really, I'm really focused on the amount of work that's done. I'm assuming it's the same-
Yes.
-for each series. So let's just go, I'll, I'll look to see if council is in agreement on a five-hundred-dollar application fee for all those except for the ones we don't charge or recharge as real nominal fee today. And then eliminate the application, there are the ongoing fee. In addition, make it retroactive through this year as an effort to, again, I think that's why we, we didn't implement it initially was because the economy is so darn low and slow. That would be a nice little boost. And I think it's something that we can afford because you guys have done a tremendous job with this year and you're gonna, you're gonna come in with a surplus. So I think we can do that. It also is a clear sign that Fountain Hills is incredibly business-friendly. And I think we can afford that, although there are drawbacks to not having a diverse revenue sources because then more people pay more, you know, individually or elsewhere because we take the dollars we talked about last time from here. You got to find a dollar elsewhere if you, if you need to maintain that revenue source. So that's, when Councilmember Alkey came up with the five hundred, I think that's a good figure. I think based on the amount of work that's done, that seems like a recapture of the cost. And ideas, discussion? Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I, I, I go along with the fee. I don't know if it's a five hundred or not, but I go along with something on an application fee. But I think what we're talking about is all these people that are here that already have their business established should be grandfathered in right now. They should not have to pay that fee at all.
Vice Mayor, we're right, we're, that's exactly what I'm talking about as well, just to be clear. Application will be just for the new folks coming in-
Correct.
-that are new or are looking to get a new license here in Fountain Hills. And the staff, the folks that are there wouldn't pay the annual fee, that's what I'm talking about. And then would have retroactively be credited back their annual fee if they paid it this year. Uh, yes.
Okay, Mayor, members of council, just so that I can be clear and that we understand how this will work, we will refund everybody that has paid their annual renewal up to January one. If there have been any new applicants that have come in since January and only paid twenty-five dollars, they will pay the new application fee of five hundred dollars.
That have already been established?
No, a new.
New, yes.
If it's a new one that has come in and since January, they've only paid twenty-five dollars for their new liquor license, which wouldn't get a renewal till a year from now. So what, if I understand correctly, what we would do is refund everybody that just got a renewal, but then we would also bill those people that are new licenses as of January. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? So when do we start charging people the five hundred dollars application fee?
When the budget's been adopted. When the new fee schedule goes into place.
So we will have an application fee effective July one-
We will.
And we will have no fees from January to July.
January to July. Past January to the current July?
Right, like I'm trying to understand how we make it retroactive to January but not charge any of the people who came in from January to July with a new application. If the new applications don't start till July one, but we're taking away the fees back to January one, is that two separate?
Two separate things. One's a retroactive rollback of any annual renewal fees.
Okay.
And the other is an application fee that is going to change effective as of the adoption of the fee schedule in August.
Okay, got it.
And the other item that I know still there is there are people that need to pay that have a bill to be paid by the end of this month and a, another day or two. Is there anything, do we need to have them pay just so that, just so that we reimburse them if this is what we all agree to? So we would be able to avoid that.
Yes, Mayor, we would communicate if the council approves it and, and this is what the vote is. And maybe we want to have, actually take a motion and vote on it so that we can communicate with them right away. We will all send them a letter and let them know, and we will start processing the checks because we want to get those checks processed before June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
Because it is this fiscal year.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Alkey.
Just so, just so I'm clear too, so certainly we're refunding the renewal fee. Now, there are some businesses that paid an application fee of twenty-five dollars initially. Are we talking about refunding that or are we gonna, I mean, we're just talking about refunding the renewal fee. We're not talking about the initial twenty-five application. Okay, I just want to make sure, yeah, we're clear.
Just keep it simple, just the renewal fee. And in fact, you mentioned January. I was thinking the fiscal year, from July to Jan, to June.
Mayor, this fiscal year we're in right now?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't charge anybody till January.
Oh, that explains that.
It started in January, right.
That's why you said January. Thank you very much. Councilmember Legay.
Julie, just a question, if we move in this direction, the anticipated revenue from the existing fee schedule was forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Is that revenue been figured into our current budget?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, no, it has not.
Well, I'm sorry, if I could, I think I understand Councilmember Legay is, is in our budget we're looking at tonight, the maximum amount would include the anticipated annual fees for this year. So we should back out the difference.
Mayor, members of the council, we did not include any of the liquor fees in the proposed budget for year eleven, twelve as revenue.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
That's helpful. Good question. Um, I appreciate you wanting a motion. I think that's a good idea, particularly with the retro portion. Any other comments on this before we formulate a motion to encompass what was said? Councilmember Dickie.
Just a sort of a comment about the fact that when we adopted these, that it was a notified public meeting, the information was there and we voted on it at the time. So, um, this was a last-year budget item and it has been in place and I, and in a very proper, noticed way. So I just want to make sure that, you know, even though some people don't think they remember that that's what we did, that's what we did, and we did it properly and we did it publicly. I, I think, you know, I, I understand everybody having hardships. I just think that we talk about certain problems that we're gonna have in our future as a town, of doing the things that people want done. And we talk about having revenue that comes from different sources and reliable and all of those things that makes sense when you talk about it, but then we, we don't always do it. So I just, I'm, you know, I'm gonna support what you want to do. But I just think that when we have our goal-setting and we talk about the things that we would like and we talk about having, you know, businesses, when we had the discussion about property tax and businesses don't pay property tax and are you business friendly or aren't, I believe we are very business friendly. I don't think it's just a theory that there's increased law enforcement needs with alcohol. I think it's more of a theory that there, there isn't. And sometimes I think we make decisions without the good evidence-based research for them. And let me just kind of pick almost random numbers. And I'll support you, but I just want to say that I was aware of what we did. I think that it was one of those steps that we probably took to diversify revenue into the town. And I don't want anybody to have a hardship for anything that we do, but unfortunately, we're just seem to be going a little bit backwards with this in theory.
Appreciate what you're saying. I totally agree that we, uh, I think it's in our interest to have diversity of revenue just like everybody in their personal savings is, good to have diversity there. I, I agree. And we are taking revenue out that, that is more diverse if we don't have it coming in. So we're, we are limiting that. But, um, we have to continue to work hard on, on options for us. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think we're somewhat up there saying the town is really starting to be business-friendly with the businesses and this is a sign of helping them out during these bad times. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. So to encompass what, what I think I said was to go to an application fee of five hundred dollars on all series except for those that are not charged today or are charged a minimal amount to eliminate the ongoing fee and to retroactively rebate, in essence, the fees back to when they were, the annual fees when they were beginning to be charged. And, um, the folks that are, have a bill or an invoice due to this month, May, that they don't need to worry about sending that in just to be reimbursed. Good. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, I have a question. The clubs, that's what you're talking about, right? With the, when you talk about the, um, like service organizations, like the gentleman that were here yesterday, or Monday? Number fourteen?
Private clubs are at five hundred now.
Okay, so, because I just want to clarify, because what you just said was what we don't, what we're not, we're doing a nominal fee now, but that's not the nominal fee.
No, there, there's, I guess it's zero today for us. There are some other communities that charge like fifteen or twenty-five dollars. We are at either five hundred to twelve hundred or zero. So I guess I just don't want to charge for that temporary license, the five hundred. These two, the temporary license, the series fifteen and sixteen, where we don't charge today.
Okay, so Mayor, then the clubs that it's not temporary for will still have an initial of five hundred dollars?
Yeah, and that's, because I think they probably still have the same paperwork to go through, I'm assuming.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alkey.
I think it's important to be clear when we're looking at specifically series fifteen, sixteen,
16, 15 and 16, we're, are we leaving the, there's a proposal here, at least with the form that was provided by staff, of increasing those fees to 25 dollars each. Now, if there's a one-time application fee of 500 for all series, we just have to be real clear here that we're, are we going to increase the fee, that's going to be the one-time application fee for those particular ones, so we are increasing those at least slightly. You see what I'm referring to?
Yeah, I think the 25 dollar fee is fine, I just don't want it to be the 500. Are you, it's up to council if we want to keep it at zero or move it to 25. The temporary license, maybe the series 15, do we, do you know if we give them any of those or the 16?
Mayor, members of the council, we get quite a few, those are the special event.
Yeah, well, on special events, I'd rather keep those as low as possible, just encourage more of those.
Well, the important thing is, at the top, Mayor, we're talking about a one-time application fee of 500. I'm sure staff realizes, but that one-time application fee of 500, and then as we go down the column, those are the renewal fees as it goes down. And so those are renewals, not applications, so theoretically, we could have a one-time application fee for all the series, you have 15 and 16, so if somebody wants to do something on the avenue and serve liquor, they're looking at 500 application fee. So I think it's important that we pull out those series and say their one-time application fee is 25 dollars or whatever it may be.
Per event.
Per event, yeah.
That would be great. Andrew, are we okay with process-wise, considering the fee schedule, making a motion, and will the staff okay to then act on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. All that we really need tonight is direction that staff will need to prepare the final schedules that'll go into your final budget on 16th. Tonight's resolution is a separate motion that we need to establish the maximum budget.
But given the detail we just went over, do we need to make, should we make a motion on the changes to the alcohol portion?
I think Ms. Getty's comment about currently due renewal fees makes that a good move to make tonight, to give her the firm direction she needs to be able to let those folks know so that she doesn't have more refunds to give during the dependency between now and the final budget.
All right, so I may move to change the application fee to 500, eliminate the ongoing recurring fee, and specifically with 15 and 16, to move those application fees to 25 from zero, no ongoing fee for those, since they're probably just temporary. Recurring fees, retroactive, make these retroactive to when we began collecting the ongoing annual fees, and then the folks that are due for payment this month of May, to not to let them know as long as they're watching the council meeting, that they don't need to mail in the payment, if they do, they would be rebated that back, and then ask staff to move on that. Do I get a second? Nobody like that?
Second.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any discussion, clarification? Councilmember Hanson?
I'd like to make an amendment for the fee to be reduced to 250.
Okay, there's a motion to amend to reduce the fees further down to 250 from 500. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right, discussion on the amendment? My effort is to recap, recuperate, recapture cost, and I think 500 seems to be a fair cost for what we're doing, and it's, particularly without the annual fee, I don't know obviously how those are all derived, but it's far less than what any other community will be charging. So I think it's...
And Mayor, just to be clear again, series, so we're looking down the line here, the series, is it 13 Domestic Farm Winery? I think the proposed one-time application fee is 100, is that, am I reading that correctly?
I think that's the proposed renewal.
Okay, so is that going to be an application, one-time application fee of 500 or is that going to be 100?
That would be 500. I think all application fees will be 500 for the initial application, no recurring fee, and because the same due diligence and staff efforts are required on those.
So series 14, 15 and 16, series 14 would have a 50 application fee, series 14 would have a 50, 15 would have a 25, and series 16 would have a 25, and then series 17 would have a 50 one-time application fee?
The series 14 would have a 500 fee, but no recurring.
Okay.
For a new application.
Okay.
So all, so that application fee line where it says 25 today would be 500, the recurring fees in that whole column would be removed, and the series 15 and 16s would have an application fee of 25.
And the extension of premises, is that 50 or is that going to be?
Let me see.
At the very bottom?
Oh, thank you.
That's a temporary.
Temporary, I think, could be at the, could be at that reduced 25 amount.
So that would be 25 as well?
I think so, unless you guys disagree, this is being a temporary, it'd be for more of a special event, I'd like to keep those low and probably keep it in alignment, which is keeping it simple.
I just want to be as clear to staff as I can.
Thanks for clarifying, yep. I appreciate that. All right, we have a second on the reduction of the application fee and the amendment to go to 250. Any other discussion on that? All right, all in favor of the amendment to 250 indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Those two to five? Do we need anything further? I think it failed.
It did.
It failed, thank you. All right, on the initial, on the main motion, the 500 and the elimination of the annual, the retroactive and da-da-da-da, with the clarification that Councilor Merelke made on those three series, that would be a 25 on the application. Are there any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thanks for the feedback, everyone. And let me just see if we had any other items brought up from the public that I might have missed. No, I don't think I missed anything else on the public, unless you guys have something that I missed. All right, Julie or Rick, where are we going at this point? No, not home yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, what we're going to do is allow Paul to recap the capital project schedule for next year and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, as part of your packet, you were given a copy of the revised CIP program, and we'd be happy to, Mark Mayer and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. If you look at the summary for the CIP, it shows approximately $17 million in projects for the next fiscal year, and that, and the majority of that assumes that the street bond will pass. That's approximately $9.5 million worth of those projects. I have provided on the dais a copy of the changes that were made, since you were provided a copy of the CIP in April of 2011. That copy showed approximately $25 million of projects over the first five years that were, that had either funding in whole or in part by the CIP fund. In fact, the town CIP fund only has a balance of $10.5 million. So we looked at moving projects out beyond five years, delaying certain projects, as Councilmember Leger brought up at the last meeting. So the, so the large 11 by 17 handout that you were given shows that we moved out approximately $14.5 million worth of projects, and we also, beyond five years, those projects are not funded, and we would require additional funds in the future to bring those projects back into the five years. We also made some reductions in some projects, added some costs to certain projects, and moved the timing around, such as the traffic signal at Palisades, we moved that out three years, we moved out those parks' master plans and design a year per the request of council. We also have a project, a drainage project, the flood control district is doing a redelineation of the Ashbrook Wash, that will require a future CIP project, probably will add it into the five-year CIP next year. Once that redelineation is completed, we'll know better what we have to do to alter the Ashbrook Wash, and right now, the flood control district was estimating that to be about a million dollar project, and we're looking for a potential grant of a half a million dollars from the flood control for that project as well. I know it's a lot of information, the 11 by 17 sheet also did not include moving out the Fort Peaks Park Master Plan, $50,000 one year, that is, that is moved in the CIP, just not on the summary, as well as that traffic signal at Palisades. So I will, I will send out an updated copy of what the changes were, and if there's any questions on what's in the CIP, Mark and I'd be happy to answer them.
So you've moved out the approximately 800 some thousand, was it, Councilmember Leger, from this year to more than five years or to beyond this year?
No, within, just within the five-year program, either one or two years. From the April, from the April copy you received, we moved out 14.5 million dollars beyond the fifth year.
And are these all dollars that would have come directly out of the CIP? Were they any grant dollars?
Some, some projects are associated with grants. One project that we moved out beyond the five years was the elimination of the Suaro Boulevard Service Road. We had applied for a grant, were not successful, we moved that out beyond five years, but if any more grant opportunities come up, we'll, we'll look at reapplying.
So we're not, we're not saying no to grant dollars?
Well, one project we are, right now, we're showing the Fountain Hills Boulevard sidewalk from Toyota Crystal Point, that's approximately a 50-50 match. The town would need to spend $300,000 roughly in CIP funds to get a grant of $300,000.
And does staff recommend that, moving that out?
I would, but it's the council, ultimately, a council decision.
You guys are sharp. Good, Councilmember Leger?
Without repeating and just recapping the recommendations I made in the last meeting, and just to clarify a question here, all of the projects that I recommended were 100% CIP. None of those projects were related to, to grant funds. I typically am not going to move away from a project that has a sizable grant fund associated with it, it's probably how we've paid for most of our capital improvements in town through grant funds. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Anything else, Paul, on the capital improvement, five-year, CIP changes?
Just some of the, we did the changes that Councilmember Leger brought up. We also, we eliminated the Fountain Lake Eoration Project for 150,000, and we, in its place, we put in a $50,000 budget for a consultant, for a water quality management program, and then we also reduced the funding for the Civic Center Circle area from 100, it was reduced from 125 to 110, and then we reduced it down to 75.
Okay.
So those are the other changes.
All right, any questions?
Mayor, Paul, the document that you gave us about the unfunded maintenance and replacement items, with the red and the blue, was that done before or after you took out the, however, the $800,000 or, because some of these appear like they would be capital hard, hard projects, like replacing windows and things like that. I'm just wondering if, since the red, the red projects were $41,000 worth, and, you know, just, for example, just taking 35,000 out of the Centennial Circle, would that help towards doing any of those? Because some of them seemed a little important.
Mayor, Councilmember Dickie, these are, these are maintenance-type projects. A capital project is a one-time project of $50,000 or more for a new capital project. Replacing of a window or an air conditioner would be considered maintenance.
Also, Mayor, so by saving some of those things, we can't use them if it's red?
No, these would be general fund-type items.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The 50,000 you had for Fountain Park for the consultant or who you're going to have for water management, now is that going to be before we get to the CI, or the IGA that you're going to work on, or is that, how is that working?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cantino, no, it's not. That's, that's a budget set aside that once we do an IGA with, if we do an IGA with the sanitary district, if it's decided that the town will, will pay for and hire a consultant, then we have to program the, program the money to be able to spend it.
Okay.
If it's agreed that the sanitary district wants to do that and take that expense on, then we wouldn't do the project.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. I don't recall any discussion on the Avenue of the Fountains median improvements, taking 200,000 out of the downtown fund, what that, what we're doing with that.
Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, the Avenue of, the median project on the Avenue of the Fountains is a project that will, that will enhance the median. It's very old, the Fountains leak, the underground irrigation's bad, the underground electrical's bad. That is a project that was brought forward to the Executive Budget Committee and then presented to council during the budget.
I'm just wondering about taking that out of the downtown money.
Money, yeah, and keeping it?
I mean, yeah, I, because I'm, when I'm thinking of downtown money, I'm thinking of economic development and tourism, and I'm just kind of wondering if that's the best place for it to come out of.
Any thoughts on that? I think that's a good comment, the, obviously it is in the downtown, and it's a beautification effort, I think, it seems like we've done that in the past with those, some of those dollars, the sidewalk, and it, yeah, the sidewalks were a big one, and this is in the median. I, yeah, I guess it was, it was in the CIP and it was changed to the, the downtown funds.
Correct, Mayor and council, there was a, I don't recall the exact project number, but there was a much, much larger project in, in the multimillion dollars for the downtown and the medians. There's actually a design that was done, and it's, it's a pretty grand plan, and we just obviously don't have the money to fund that project, and this is a scaled-down version. And that project was, did have funding from the downtown fund.
When might this come forward for consideration?
Mayor and council, we're currently working on some landscape concepts. We, we have a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Angela Strohan, that is, has landscape architect background, and we're, have an agreement with her to do some conceptual designs, and we have met with her and the manager and I, and she's putting it together, and we're hoping in the fall I'll work study.
Okay, I guess the concern, if, my concern is, Councilmember Hanson, if you don't want it out of those dollars when we get to that item, which would maybe be 50,000 this next fiscal year, that we have the funding in the right spot, that we don't get stuck at that point.
Yeah, because I think the downtown money is trying to get, like, using it for tourism, you know, trying to get more people to come to town to, you know, so we can get the sales tax dollars, and I don't think, you know, updating our fountains is going to be the attraction to get people to come to town.
Councilmember Merelke? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Paul, the, the improvements on the median, I was concerned about, but I think it's been pretty well answered, except for the, the designs and everything. You're not talking about removing any of the big trees or anything like that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cantino, right now, we're just doing concepts. There would be some of the large trees that we would recommend removal. If you go to the, if you walk that area, a lot of the large trees, the roots are causing a lot of the problems underground and heaving the brick pavers and whatnot.
You going to talk about replacing those?
Correct, yes.
So we would have shade?
Correct.
Because a lot of people use that all the time, and I think it'd be, you know, something we need to keep up. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson?
And how, how would we make sure that this would integrate into our overall downtown plan? Because we've got that out there, and we wouldn't want to move forward with something that later on, we're sorry we, we did.
Like, those things we can talk about.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, the, the proposed enhancements do follow the downtown vision plan.
I think that's the whole input is behind it. Councilor Merelke?
One of the things that we discussed during the Budget Committee was, you know, starting to do something with the downtown, start moving towards, you know, the town has to be the catalyst, you know, and take the step to start doing some of the improvements, and that's why we had talked about using some of the downtown development funds to some extent to spend and begin to develop the downtown area. So I think it's important that this particular project stays on the table and we move forward with it, because too often you hear from residents saying, well, what are you doing? You know, I think I've heard more than once, I'll believe it when I see it as far as any development downtown. So I think it's very important that we, you know, wherever these funds come from, that we begin with the downtown development, when we start doing something, and I think with the plan that we have in place, putting the infrastructure in there first is going to be key and most important for further development. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other councilmember thoughts on the fund, the funding for this potential future project in the amount of perhaps fifty thousand this next fiscal year, coming from somewhere other than CIP, for example, now coming from the downtown fund? If I just, if we, if we move forward on the budget as it is, it just won't be, the dollars won't be coming from the CIP.
Mayor and councilmembers, just to clarify, the, the project budget is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for four years.
Oh, okay.
Two hundred thousand dollars coming from the CIP fund, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from the downtown fund.
Okay, that's the portion, that's right. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Councilmember Elke?
Do we know, how much do we have in the downtown development fund at present?
A, a little more than one point two million.
Okay. Do we know how long we've had that amount, and how many years has it been like that?
Mayor, members of the council?
Yes.
Actually, we have had that amount of money for a significant amount of time, because we're not spending more than we're bringing in. So if every year gets a little bit bigger, we bring in almost three hundred thousand dollars in the past couple of years, and so the budget for that department is about two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Yeah, that's, I think, after you said that, Julie, I think I kind of refreshed my memory as far as some of our discussions, is why have this money that's just sitting there, kind of like our general fund when we're using to pay off these bonds? Why have that money sitting there? We should be using it for the downtown, for, you know, for the purpose. I, I understand economic development, but I think having something for people to come see goes hand in hand with, with economic development as a whole.
Councilmember Dickey?
You were looking for input, Mayor, so I would agree with what Councilman Elke just said.
Thanks. All right, anything else, Paul?
No, that's it.
All right, council, we're kind of, gonna put our CIP aside now? Does that sound good? Thanks, Paul. All right, and earlier today or yesterday, Julie, you sent out a memo, kind of helpful. I thought it was pretty helpful. Obviously, you also talked about costs between departments, and maybe that was the gist of it. I can't remember the, the focus of it exactly. But it also broke down each department and, and talked about some changes in each department. I don't have that document with me currently, and I don't know, I probably could try to pull it up on my, my computer here. But if you happen to have that, that would be interesting to go over. I think, I thought it was helpful. And it's not so much that just reading through it won't be, the folks won't be missing anything. I think if, would you mind going over what the topic was or what was behind it and what, and what it says? I'm sure most councilmembers saw it, but I thought it encompassed some of the changes. Oh, thanks. Henry's got it printed out here.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, what we were attempting to do and intended to put it in the budget document early enough, but obviously, because things were moving around so much, we didn't really have an opportunity, opportunity to do that. So what we intend to do is now, you know, give this information to the council and include it in the budget document, so that this would be hopefully the pattern moving forward, that each year, we won't have to wait for the council to ask us, why did this go up? Why did this line item go down? So what, what we try to do is, by department, try to explain some of the differences, why there was a big increase or a big decrease. So specifically for the Administration Department, which includes the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, Human Resources, Information Technology, Finance, Economic Development, and Legal. So some of the things we talked about is, if we looked at the Town Manager's budget, that division, that budget went up by forty-two thousand dollars. But the reason it went up is because we had that significant contingency in there for, at the same time that we were proposing the raise in the, in the sales tax. What we didn't want to do is, when we were early on in the budget and we were proposing the increase in the sales tax, we didn't want to go to all the departments and start putting all kinds of things back in the budget. So we put it in the contingency as a placeholder, so that if the sales tax passed, we would then be able to go and reallocate it within departments. So as it turned out, the sales tax has not passed, so it was real easy to take that out. But in the budget document that you have, it includes both the increase in the sales tax as well as that contingency. But if you take that contingency out, which we have now, that division, the Town Manager's budget, reduced by six percent.
And that's the summary, you kind of encompassed Administrative Department in general.
Yes.
I thought that was helpful, too. It went up one percent over the prior year, but it was due to the fact that you had to budget for three elections.
Correct, Mayor. Again, the, the Administration Department includes a lot of divisions. So if we look at just the Administration Department, the increase in the whole department overall, including everything, was less than one percent. And we had a significant increase, obviously, for the cost of the elections, which is almost seventy thousand dollars, so.
All right, and the Information Technology?
Information Technology, there was an increase in wages, not in personnel. What it is, is we have a, a finance person who's allocated more to the IT. She's both IT and finance, and so when she works on the IT side, she gets paid a different rate. So there's an increase there because she's spending more time helping with the website and with some of the IT things that we need. So there is that increase. We also have to start replacing our servers. We've been delaying that for a few years. We need to start putting in Microsoft servers and paying for the, the software on that. And then there's some money for a new website design, two thousand dollars, as well as online storage for disaster recovery. That's an eight thousand dollar expenditure. In the Human Resources Division, that budget actually went down, went down by fifty-seven thousand dollars, and that's primarily due to a decrease in our liability insurance. The Human Resources Division also has the risk, so that went down.
Why would that go down? You always hear of insurance going up. Do you have, do you have an idea? I'm sorry, pardon, unfair question to ask you.
Oh, actually, I do. The, the way that, because we're with the Southwest Risk Pool, the way that they determine what your premiums are, it's based on what they call ratable expenditures. So those, it's basically based on your budget, and if your budget goes down, your ratable expenditures goes down, so therefore, your premium goes down.
Okay, thanks.
Finance, again, the increase there is because of that increase in the finance person doing more IT, so that person gets paid at a higher rate. The Economic Development Division, it appears, and this is one of the things that I, I know is confusing, we took a bigger portion of the Economic Development Administrator's salary out of the downtown and over to the general fund. She's spending more time doing general economic development as opposed to being more focused on the downtown. So she was originally sixty percent in the downtown fund and forty percent in the general fund. She's now fifty fifty, spending more time doing general economic development. And then, and the Legal Services Division, which is our prosecutor, our town attorney, our public defender, that budget actually went down by almost seventy-six hundred dollars, and that's hopefully because our legal costs are going down now. I'd be happy to answer any other questions on the Administration Division. Both Paul Mood and Mark Mayer here, they also have explanations for their divisions and line items as to some of the differences that, in their budgets.
So they'd be comfortable going over?
Absolutely.
Some of the highlights or, or lowlights, whatever they might be? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Julie, under the HR, it's, and I saw this reoccurring as well in some of the explanations that the salaries are all being now displayed as full-time, and the, the part-time is going away. And what was kind of the reason for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, that is actually a data entry error. They should be the same part-time, because there's, the part-time people are still part-time, and the full-timers still full-time. There's no difference. But when it was being keyed in, we put it all into full-time. So it, we'll, we'll separate that back out when we do the final document, but that's the reason, and it's, it's just an input error.
Okay. And then, under the Town Manager, what, what now is the contingency amount?
The contingency amount now is thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay. And, let's see, under, under Economic Development, we had this happen last year, too, because they're coming out of two different funds, the excise tax fund and, and the general fund. And I think it's helpful to, you know, have a sheet that adds those numbers together to get a, a full idea of what that, you know, that function is doing. There was something that kind, sometimes the, the group health seemed to fluctuate in a funny fashion. In an ED, when you add those two together, it's, it's like a, it went from fifty-five hundred to twelve thousand, and I'm just wondering if that somehow, I'm not sure how that could have gone up so much for one person.
Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, I'll have to take a look at that, because I'm not sure why it would go up that much as well.
Okay, yeah, because last year, it was, the combined amount was fifty-five hundred, and then the combined amount this year was the, the twelve thousand.
I know we had an increase, but I don't think it was that much.
It, I know, it seemed, it almost seemed like that one number was in there twice on both ends, in both funds.
We'll, we'll check that.
So maybe one of those can come out. And there were, just in, in that, that budget, there just seemed to be some significant increases, thirty-four percent in meetings and conferences, forty-four percent in professional fees, and thirty-one percent in advertising, advertising and signage. So I think for, for something, you know, those big, large increases, they probably need a little bit more detail.
Mayor and council, we, we will provide that detail for that. Keep in mind also, this function is very intense in its use of data and keeping that data fresh. That's the inventory that, that Economic Development keeps. And then also, of course, those conferences are used for marketing to the community, the networking, et cetera, that, that is accomplished. But what we'll do is, we'll give more detail on what those expenditures are.
Councilmember Leger?
Yes, if I may address Councilwoman Hanson. Your observation, was it for the total ED budget or just one of the, one of the spreadsheets that you were looking at where you saw those increases?
I did it both ways.
Okay. I just wondered.
Those were for the, those were for the total.
For the total, because I just wondered if it was attributed to the, what was a fifty-fifty split, because that's what confused me, to a sixty-forty split. And it appeared that in one of the budgets under the general fund, it went up significantly because that moved over from the excise tax, but you're saying it was total? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, who's, who's lucky? Mark or Paul now to share with some highlights on the budget? I know, in general, obviously, the budget is going down, and some years, you'll spend more in some departments than, than you did the year before, but less in others, so. But would you mind giving us a, I know council's received an email a while back to go over this, but it'd be great for the public.
Yeah, Mayor and councilmembers, I'll, I'll hit the highlights of the email that I, that I sent out to you guys the other day. Development Services has a budget in FY-12 for approximately one point six million dollars. That was a four percent increase over last year. One new item this year is increased wash maintenance, so we can catch up, because we took a year off due to, to the budget constraints. If I back out that increase from wash maintenance, we actually have a overall decrease in the budget of a half a percent. For the different divisions, as, as Julie pointed out, a lot of the changes deal with personnel and wages. My previous position was pretty much all charged to Public Works Administration. When I took a look at it, I figured out how, you know, roughly how much percent I deal with code enforcement, planning, engineering. So my time is, is spread over the divisions in five, five, ten, fifteen percent increments. And we did that with all the personnel, looked at how much time they actually spent in each division. So that's where you see the, the slight increases or decreases in the wages. For building safety, obviously, we have a, a decrease in the building activity. So we had a, a permit, and a permit technician and inspector that we took half of their time and moved them over to code enforcement. So you'll see that the, the Building Safety Division overall budget went down, but then the code enforcement budget went up, because that person, half of their time went from building over to code enforcement. In the Engineering Division, again, that had an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars. Roughly sixty-nine thousand dollars of that was due to the increased wash maintenance and twenty-five thousand dollars due to the reallocation of personnel across the division. And then we had the Department of Environmental Quality add a new five thousand dollar permit that we have to pay for every year now, stormwater permit. The Facilities Division, that actually went down slightly. Our budget for, for next year is four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. The, in previous years, the budgets were just cut arbitrarily. I let the, the Facility Superintendent look at what he needs for each building that the town owns, and then let him adjust certain accounts as necessary. I know, like, like last year, we, he had a replacement of an air conditioning unit at five thousand dollars, cut in half to twenty-five hundred dollars, while he can't, obviously, can't, can't buy half an air conditioning unit. Mapping and graphics, again, that went, that went down slightly just because of the allocation of personnel's time, as with the, the Planning Division. In the, in the Streets Department, that stayed roughly the same as last year. However, the HER funding went down significantly. We had a carryover in HER fund of about a hundred, about two hundred thousand dollars, and we're using a hundred, two, or a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that to make up the difference. That's not going to be sustainable come next budget cycle, so we're going to have to look at either some cuts or contracting out some services. We did have our, our Open Space Specialist, Charlie Fleck, did retire. Raymond Reese, our environmental planner, is now taking over the wash and dam maintenance that Charlie ran. And our, our mechanic, Jeff Larson, is now doing half, halftime vehicle maintenance, and then the other half of his time, he's managing the open space contract for the medians. We also, you know, we have some dead trees on Fountain Hills Boulevard. We, you know, we had to add some budget in to get those removed before they fall over, and just certain items like that. So while we had a decrease in personnel, we also did have some, some maintenance items that we didn't need to take care of, so that, that brought the budget back up to last year's level. So we, we're trying to maintain the same level of service, but it's getting harder with, when we have the funding cut. So any questions on Development Services or Streets? Be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Councilmember Hanson?
I wanted to thank you for this, the unfunded maintenance and replacement items. This was a real eye-opener of things that, that we're facing. And even if they're not in red, there's, it's, it's quite a laundry list. And I know you've got challenges with some of the, the aging buildings that the town owns, the, the theater and, and the Little Theater and the, and the Kiwanis Building. It looks like they're all facing some, some real issues and, and repairs and maintenance. I don't, is there much revenue that comes from the Kiwanis Building?
Julie, much revenue from that building?
Mayor, members of council, we don't get any revenue from the Kiwanis Building.
Do we still have a, a management agreement then for that building? Or how does, how does the building operate, I guess?
They, we have a long-term lease. They lease it from the town for, I believe, a dollar a year.
And then that building does get leased out, though?
I would ima, through the Kiwanis. We have, we don't do anything other than we maintain it and repair it, and that's it.
Councilmember Elke?
You could probably speak a little bit more to that. Yeah, the, the, Sunset Kiwanis does have a long-term lease, I think goes until twenty-nineteen or maybe even beyond that, I'm not sure. But I, I saw Kathy wasn't here earlier, well, Brian is here. I know during the summer months, the town, the town has the authority to use it Monday through Friday, I mean, all the time, not just the summer months, Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. And there was a time that Parks and Rec was using it for summer programs, routines. They do have, Parks and Rec Department does have a, a number of items that are stored in there. They have an office in their garage. I don't know when the last time it was used. I think it was maybe last summer, it might have been, that there, there was some activities in there. So I think that's, as far as what the town uses it for. I mean, perhaps, Mark, there's something else I'm forgetting, but I think that's, that pretty much sums it up.
So it's a building that's, we're maintaining, that's getting older, and that's what you're, you're bringing up?
I just didn't know if any other groups ever leased it out, or if there was, you know, any revenue at all that could be helped to help upkeep charge costs?
If I could, just to clarify, I, I think the Kiwanis does rent it out to other groups, but that revenue goes to them rather than the town.
That can be an option to consider, if there is revenue that comes in for a community-oriented event. Is that what you're contemplating?
I just.
Something to cover costs, maintenance.
Just looking.
Yeah, looking for options. Yeah, looking for options.
Councilmember Alke.
The, the building's available to the town Monday through Friday, eight to five, so if someone came to the town, um, I know AARP is in there during tax time, they come in there, we don't, it's during the, during the weekday, we don't have anything to do with that, we don't lease or do anything with them. So it, it's available there if the town wanted to lease it out, it's just, I don't know, no, no one seems to want to use it, so it's kind of, kind of how it is.
Yeah, thank you. Anything, you know, Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mark, maybe you can help me answer this. I've heard that the building is, as we all know, is really old. Has anybody been in from any agency or engineering and from the government or anything to bring it back up to specs? And if it has, is that requiring all-new lights, new air conditioners, and everything in that building, which would be actually exorbitant versus what the building is?
Mayor Sloan, Vice Mayor Cantino, are you asking me specifically about the Kiwanis Building?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm not sure, because that doesn't actually go through our department. Uh, it's actually through facilities, and they maintain the structure, so if it's, those are the kind of issues that if they came before them for electrical inspections or something like that, they would not go through us. So I really can't answer that.
That's where Alke.
Recently, I went through the building with, uh, with our, um, fire marshal, Randy Roberts, and we did a physical inspection of the building. Um, and I spoke with, uh, or communicated with Stretch Quebec's, uh, Facilities, uh, Department. There's going to be some, um, I think some change in some batteries in the, the, uh, lights for the exits and that sort of thing. From what I understand, nothing too substantial, and the Kiwanis is replacing some of the fire extinguishers in there with larger ones that are necessary. As far as that, I'm, I'm unaware. I know the water for the outside, um, landscaping is not on, um, but, uh, beyond that, nothing else.
Good, Mark, take it away.
Um, just want to mention a couple of things when I start. Um, in looking at the budget, uh, overall, we had a reduction from last year to this year of six percent. Some of the individual, uh, division budgets might be up, but overall, it's down. Uh, we're at a budget of, uh, two point, almost two point two million dollars, uh, significantly, a little bit less than that. Um, looking across the different budgets, one of the changes that, that probably shows up most significantly, uh, is the reallocation of, of my salary associated with the reorganization plan that took place. So there was a fairly significant reduction in the salary cost to the Recreation Division, and those were then reallocated to not only the Community Center, but also the seniors. And so that's where some of those shifts took place. But I will go through these, uh, specifically and address any questions that you might have. If you look at the Community Center, again, that was one of the places, as I mentioned, uh, the salary got reallocated from, uh, what had been at forty percent in the rec budget, down to fifteen percent of my time at the, uh, Community Center. Uh, telecommunications, that was an eight thousand dollars, which simply got transferred to the Internal Service Fund, so went from telecommunications to telecom charges. Uh, under advertising and signage, additional funds of fifteen hundred dollars for advertising of magazines typically associated with bridal events and for weddings and receptions, and then to the, uh, money for two bridal fairs that take place in, uh, Phoenix. Um, those were not in budgets in the past year. Um, telecom charges, uh, as I mentioned, increase of approximately eight thousand dollars, uh, simply a, uh, reallocation of money from telecommunications before, and then transfer out, um, was just a difference in restructuring the debt, so there's a pretty significant figure. Um, the good news on that particular budget is from two thousand and nine to, uh, the proposed budget for next year, we basically, along with the restructuring of debt, have cut the costs associated with the Community Center almost in half. I believe it's ninety-seven percent, so, um, I think that's something we can all be proud of.
Yeah, what, what dollar amounts is that for operational costs at the Community Center roughly?
Community Center.
Obviously doesn't cut, uh, yeah, account for debt for the building and such, but the operational, the annual year numbers.
It's not just operational costs, it also includes debt service.
Okay.
Uh, in two thousand and nine, our actual costs were eight hundred and thirty thousand, a little over that. And this year, they're proposed to be four hundred and twenty thousand, almost four hundred and twenty-one thousand, of which a hundred ninety-three five is debt.
Yeah, I'll celebrate that with you. Thank you.
Thought it'd be nice to toss out some good news.
That is good.
Uh, moving on to the Recreation Budget, again, as I mentioned, the fluctuations in, in staff are largely associated with myself. Uh, increase under dues and subscriptions, absorbing online registration, uh, there's additional cost to process, those of three thousand dollars. And then we've been utilizing Survey Monkey for some internal surveys, uh, to get a better feedback from people who attend programs and activities and get their feelings on things we should offer, attitudes, facilities, those kind of things. Um, under telecommunications, again, kind of the same thing, shifting telecommunications at five thousand three hundred dollars down to the Internal Service Fund for telecom charges. Uh, instructor fees, again, a, a decrease, uh, result of eliminating some programs, in this case particularly yoga. Um, construct, contractual services, increase of approximately five thousand for teen programs, thirty-seven hundred, excuse me, of five thousand, of which the breakdown is thirty-seven hundred for teen programs and fourteen hundred dollars for co-ed softball program. Uh, constituent communications, um, we have gone to, starting this summer, a, um, non-published, an online, uh, in the loop instead. Um, so that between the constituent communications is a savings of seventeen thousand dollars plus savings of the mailing costs of another twenty-four hundred dollars, uh, so pretty substantial savings. Under program materials, uh, increase of thirteen thousand, eight hundred of which is for the Centennial Celebration, um, per goals C2 and five thousand dollars for the local talent event, again, per council goal, in this case, EL2. Um, and then post is, as I mentioned, was a savings of twenty-four hundred dollars. And then again, telecommunications charges that were transferred from up above. On to the parks, um, the largest increase undergrounds, maintenance repairs, was associated with six thousand dollars, and that was budgeted for the landscaping of the amphitheater. It's one of the recommendations that came from the Downtown Greening Committee, uh, was that we really need to soften the appearance of the amphitheater, especially if we wanted to continue to attract weddings and create a situation where, um, people could stage for photographs primarily. And we really don't have something like that down that would soften that and lend itself to, to photograph, so we were trying to accomplish that. Uh, also, two thousand five hundred for replacements of the trees if necessary in Fountain Park, and then, uh, twelve hundred dollars for, uh, refilling the two playground impact surfaces. As time goes on, those tend to degrade, and you need to backfill, um, to cover any, um, exposed footings, that kind of thing, for public safety. Um, under maintenance repairs, increase of ten thousand dollars to resurface two tennis courts. You might recall, we did get, uh, a request for funds that were approved by the council. We've left that in there, we're working that process through to see if we can get the bids and get them to the council in time. If that happens, we will not have to utilize that money, but we want to make sure that we had some funds in there in case we couldn't turn that, um, bid around quickly enough. Um, we have another twelve thousand for fountain light repairs due to age and water cask, any damage that tends to occur, um, as the water hits the top of the lights that are on the fountain. We have, in Golden Eagle Park, ten thousand to replace four rusted twenty-foot light poles that are, we consider to be in danger. And then six thousand for lamping of ball field number three. We tend to go through a rotation, uh, as you put those lights on, they have a period of time as they burn through, and you start to lose the efficiency, so we try to replace those on a frequent basis. And, and ball field number three has been deferred, and so we would like to bring that forward. Uh, contractual services is a decrease due, results of services budget instead now, used to be under contractual services, but all of our landscaping contract costs associated with the parks now appear under, uh, the landscaping contract line item. Um, next item is landscaping contracts. We had an increase of sixteen thousand dollars, as I mentioned, I think, uh, when I was in front of you recently. Um, we have some trees that are large enough that we physically don't have the equipment and the skills to be able to, to really trim those. Um, it, it helps us with thinning and topping out some of the trees, uh, so they're not as vulnerable for some of those high wind events that we get, so we don't lose some of our larger trees. We, we have the ability to thin them out. We simply can't reach them from the ground or even with the boom truck that the street department has. Um, and then, uh, Fountain Park, we have five thousand for increased maintenance of the existing and the new trees. Um, and then under program materials for the parks, we have an increase of, at Golden Eagle Park, uh, referring to transfers just from the grounds and maintenance repairs to program materials. The last budget is for senior services, um, under salaries. Again, the only fluctuation that is due to the reallocation of, of my salary to a portion of that going now to, uh, senior services. Rental leases increased to, moving from a different line item, used to be under office supplies, um, and there's an annual movie rental that's included in there as well that we show. And then printing expenses increased to, moving from a different line item, again, it's just transfer of those funds from two line items. And contractual services increased modestly associated with, you may recall that the cost of home-delivered meals, which is in this line item, is, is going up this year to, uh, or this fiscal year, to, um, six dollars and seventy-three cents, so we need to account for that. And then finally, the Internal Service Fund charges were just an increase due to moving, again, that item from telecommunications. So with that, I would gladly answer any questions.
Thanks, Mark, for going over those and highlighting even some of those smaller items, appreciate it. Um, council, questions for community services?
Mayor.
Councilmember Leger.
Mark. Thanks for the presentation. Actually, I have a question for, for Paul.
Good.
Um, and Ju, Julie as well. Um, within the last couple of days, Paul, you've, you've provided us with this document, um, unfunded maintenance replacement items. Um, I've heard at least two, if not three, four councilmembers refer to it this, this evening. And I all, I too noticed the items in red, um, the high priorities were approximately forty-two thousand dollars to, to attend to those. And, and if you could just hold on for a, a second, question for Julie is when we look at page one sixteen in the budget, um, under the Town Managers Division, and I know this has been a work in progress and some of these numbers have changed, do we still have three hundred and thirteen thousand there for contingency, or has that been, has that been revised?
Mayor, members of council, the contingency has been reduced, it's now down to thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand, okay, so three hundred thousand dollars has, has moved out, okay, very good. Thank you.
Council, any questions for Mark? Council. Vice Mayor.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mark, maybe you can answer a question. Uh, on the money that you have set across for the resurfacing of the courts, um, is that going, can you, is it going to the pickleball or is it going to tennis courts?
Let me check. My memory serves me correct, I believe it was a combination of the two. There were only two courts.
Mm-hmm.
Not to be resurfaced, and then there's an additional, um, it just says two courts, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just the two tennis courts, nothing in here for pickleball.
Nothing to pickleball, okay, thank you.
That was this year. I think we, we did move money for this year to cover pickleball, so that's this current budget. Good question.
Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Leger.
Actually, I was addressing Paul, but it looks like he's disappeared. Oh, there he is. Anyhow, Paul, my, the point I was trying to make is that, as I stated, that forty-two thousand in, in those high priorities, I think, caught all of our attention, that's why I was interested in the contingency, I was going to look towards that possibly, obviously thirteen thousand's not going to cut it. And if those are general fund, and most of these line items are pretty small dollars, I'm hopeful that as we move through the budget year, if there are any cost savings realized in, in your budget, possibly, or other budgets, we can, we can look at those things, because I think those are very important to, to look at. If we need to continue to defer them because of our circumstance, we will, but I just wanted to point out, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and I'm sure you'll be paying attention to those throughout the year.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Leger, that, that's an excellent point. Um, as we get to the end of the budget year, you know, we're, we're about, a little over a month away, and we did get some good bids on some of the maintenance items, so we do have some savings, and we are looking at that. So some of the smaller items in red, um, we're about, we're going to be able to do about fifty percent of those.
Awesome.
So we're going to try to get as many as we can done by the end of the fiscal year with, with some savings that we've had.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, great. Any other questions for community services? I had a question, or probably for either of you, if you've heard from, um, I know we're now in practice of talking with our commissions, uh, related to budgetary items, particularly anything that might be considered sensitive. Um, have we got feedback from anyone, any concerns from the commissions at all related to any of the changes you mentioned or thing, items going forward? Mark?
No, we made it a special point this year, uh, with Julie's help to meet, uh, and the Budget Committee with the, uh, Seniors Advisory Commission, uh, and went over, uh, how we would structure that, uh, this year. Um, one of the issues that we've dealt with, of course, is, is costs associated with meal increases. And we worked out an arrangement with them whereby, uh, the town would continue to cover the costs of staffing, but the Senior Services, Inc. has also committed that they would then recover and pay the cost associated with any shortfall that we had on the meals. So that seems the arrangement not only works for the town in our best interest, but also, uh, works for the seniors and senior services as well. So we do have that commitment, so, um, we involved them early, we involved them several times. Uh, in fact, at our last meeting, they thanked us for that, so.
Good, yeah, that was good. Um, Board of Adjustment, they have anything to, to add?
They may, but I'm probably not the right person to ask.
I know, they meet once a year, I'm just kidding. Um, the changes to the budget document itself, I know we had, um, Ms. Kesther Thomas talk about, um, some things that were missing, and you talked about things that would be added as far as the appearance and the correlation between goals and other items, is that still to come?
Um, yes, Mayor, members of the council, um, this year was, um, extremely challenging, not only because we lost our budget person, but also because of the census, which sort of sent us back to square one as far as the budget. So we've been doing the best we can to keep up with just keeping track of, of the numbers, and we fully intend to take a look at our performance indicators and, and upgrade those more, integrate them more with the council goals, as well as include this information that we presented tonight. So our goal is that when we give you a final budget document to adopt on June sixteenth, that we will have most of that stuff incorporated. Now that we at least know where we're at with dollars, we can now get together and start putting the document together.
Councilmember Dickey, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, speaking of performance measures, if, if you haven't reached that point with the community contracts yet, how will that look in the budget? Will it just be an amount and kind of a to-be-determined sort of way?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, currently what we're doing is we have talked to three of the community contract groups. The goal with, is that we will meet with them before the start of the fiscal year and create, you know, the, the service that we want from those groups as well as the performance indicators. We plan to do that with the Budget Committee, we've already reached out to the groups, but it's not been finalized yet. As far as the budget document, those performance indicators may not be in the document, and right now it's just a dollar amount, but the Budget Committee has yet to go through that process of allocating it.
Thank you.
The, oh, Councilmember Hanson.
Um, okay, and that reminded me of, about the community contracts. In the Town Managers' Budget, um, it, it appears two different ways in the budget document, so I just wondered how it was, how it was going to be. Um, so on page one sixteen, the Town Managers' Budget, it has community service contracts at two hundred thousand five hundred and fifty, and then it has tourism spelled out separately at a hundred and three thousand two hundred. Now, in another place, it has all the community contracts together and not separated out, so I didn't know which it was, if they're still all going to be under community contracts or if tourism's going to be called out separately.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, we separated out tourism, treating it a little different than a community contract. Tourism is really a program, so we did separate it out, but if you put it, if, depending on how you, um, present the budget, if you present it by division, which is the Town Managers', you'll see it broken out, but if you present it by department, which is by division, it will be as one number. But it is separated out, and, and that's the way it's going to be from this point forward. And I believe we came to that conclusion from the Budget Committee, that it was a separate, it really wasn't a community contract as much as it was a program.
So would there be the potential to possibly fund a part of the tourism out of the ED money?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Hansen, uh, that is certainly a policy decision that, that, uh, we're eager to have a discussion on, uh, as we go forward, and in fact, uh, recently in our BEVAC meeting, there was some discussion about that as well, and Councilmember Alke addressed that, I think, very thoroughly, in that, uh, there's a lot of different possibilities we can approach or address or utilize as we go forward in this. But I, we thought for this, for this, this is quite late in the process, that, that would be something that we'd want to address comprehensively with you, uh, before
that we'd want to address comprehensively with you before we, as we go into the next budget cycle.
But that could be done during the year, then, as the discussion progresses, and possibly reallocate the funds?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, any policy decision could be made, as long as we don't go above our stipulated maximum. So, as far as policy goes, all things are always on the table, and eager to discuss that with you.
Then, with the proposed reductions in the community contracts, what would those dollar amounts look like now? Do we know?
Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, a lot of that's going to have to do with the decisions as to what we are purchasing, or what we want to acquire from these contracts in the coming year. Tourism is a little bit clear-cut, we've been able to see kind of what the activities are there, and what the expenses are, it's been very clear, the reporters declare, we've been able to kind of hone in on the number there. The other ones, we still need to have more discussion with these community groups, and particularly with the council, to hone in on exactly what we want to obtain from these agreements in the coming year. So, they could vary.
So, it's hard to establish a placeholder for them.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leger.
Along those lines, just as a point of clarification, what I'm looking at in the budget with respect to community service contracts and tourism...
What page are we on?
Page one sixteen.
Okay.
That reflects a twenty percent reduction in those contract costs from our previous fiscal year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Dickey.
That's kind of what my problem was with it, because I thought the total was two eighty-five, and it looks like it's three oh three, or something else, I lost my place, but...
Yeah, three oh three, seven fifty.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering...
With them broken out in the department budget, it comes up to three oh three, is there an explanation for that? Devil.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I believe that's a twenty percent reduction overall, for all of the four agencies, it was just a straight twenty percent deduction.
Well, on the, Mayor, on the, one of the overheads that we did, that I wrote all over the place, it just looks like it should be two eighty-five, seven twelve, and that would be with the twenty percent reduction.
Maybe you can check on that for us next time. Yeah, I see that, or do you understand what it might be? Councilmember Leger? You had a light pull off, nope, okay. Any other questions for Mark, or I guess we're open for anything else here tonight? Staff first, Rick, or Julie, did you have other items? I know you sent out a little blurb to give us an update of the things you needed to cover apart. Of course, we've got to get to the maximum number, were there other items to cover tonight?
Mayor and Council, we have, you have, and of course, our staff and citizens here have been very productive tonight in providing us what we needed. We have a number before you for a statutory maximum, thirty-five million, three hundred thousand, and so, our next task here is to adopt that, and so, I'll let you address that issue at this time.
Okay, thirty-five, three hundred, okay, thank you. Any other discussion before we do that? Council? Councilmember Leger.
Just for the benefit of the public, could you break that out between general fund and capital fund, and just one question prior to doing that, this thirty-five, three hundred thousand reflects the reduction in the capital projects since the last time we met, is that correct? Okay, thank you. If you could break that out, that would be helpful.
Sure, Mayor, Members of the Council, the general fund, originally, the proposal was a budget of twelve point nine million dollars, that has been reduced to twelve point six million dollars, and there was no change in the Highway User Revenue Fund or the Streets Fund, that remains at one point three. The excise tax remains the same at two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Development fees, that remains the same, seventy thousand, and that's for a development fee study that we are required to have. The debt service, again, with paying off this building, is reduced from two point eight million down to two point five million. The Special Revenue Fund, or our grant fund, that's just in the event we get miscellaneous grants, that stays at one point five, and the capital projects went from seventeen point four down to seventeen point one. So, the total expenditures, our maximum amount that we can spend, originally was proposed at thirty-six point two, but now it's being recommended at thirty-five point three million dollars.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Julie, thanks for going through that. All right, Council, anyone wish to make the motion on the Resolution two thousand eleven dash nineteen? All right, Council, I'll move that Council adopt Resolution two thousand eleven dash nineteen, adopting the maximum amount for the town of Fountain Hills fiscal year two thousand eleven, twelve tentative budget, at thirty-five point three million dollars. Second? All right, any other discussion on this item? Sound good, Andrew? Got it covered, all right. All in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right, thank you very much. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Councilmember Hanson.
Will we have any opportunity, if we have any additional questions or anything, at the June second meeting?
Good, that's good. What is, yeah, what is our next step? How we get further input? Where are we going from here? Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Obviously, we have our June second meeting, we have our June sixteenth meeting.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we have three more opportunities to meet together on June the second, of course, a work study on June the fourteenth, and of course, we would look for final adoption of the budget on June the sixteenth. We have reserved some time at the end, if we, if all this fails, and we do this typically, just in case, on June thirtieth, we need to have a special meeting to address a last-minute issue, but our intention is to adopt on June the sixteenth, and there'll be three opportunities for you to meet. And of course, our staff is available every day until the end of the fiscal year to answer any of your questions, and to address any concerns that you have.
Mayor, I did, I went through a little exercise, and because some of the divisions looked like they did such a really good job of attempting to stay almost at the current fiscal year levels for the line items, and they, you know, really kept it down. Some of the other ones, there were greater variations. So, I kind of just did a spreadsheet, and just looking at, you know, some of the common things that everybody has, like the dues, subscriptions, publications, meeting conferences, professional fees, and office supplies, and in looking at some of those, keeping them at current or less than five percent increase, it added up to about sixty-six thousand dollars. So, maybe just keeping in mind that, you know, just looking at some of those that had the greater, like we talked about in economic development, some of those larger increases, if they, you know, if there's any possibility for tweaking some of those.
And those are outside of staff, real staff wages being accounted in one area than another? It's outside of those.
Right, except there was one thing that came out when I did the spreadsheet, and on the, you know, on the salaries, when we could explain, you know, they all got reallocated, well, in a couple departments, there's only one individual. So, they did show an increase, and it was odd, because in these two instances, the increase was one percent. So, I got to thinking, I wondered if that was the one percent that you were talking about at the last meeting, that was for the merit increase, but then it would appear that maybe it's already been applied across the board, as long as these two individuals appeared to have gotten the one percent. So, I'm just wondering if it's already in there across the board.
Mayor, yes, Councilmember Hanson, yes, that one percent has always been in, and it was not intended originally to be a merit, it was intended to be part of the innovation program, but the way to calculate the number was based on the wages, so it was in there at one percent. We've not added the one percent from the last council meeting, it's always been there, and it is one percent, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars total.
Yeah, I just thought it was, since we just had that discussion, and all of a sudden there was the one percent, and I guess when you talked about a, you know, a motive incentive program, that that would have been like a separate little line item, you know, the incentive program to be used, you know, throughout the year, but it seems to be already there.
Originally, we had, at the very, very beginning of this budget process, had included a merit increase for employees, and then, when it was obvious that that was not going to pass, we just took the merit out, left in the one percent, and, you know, we're going to use it for an innovation program, but it wasn't going to be one percent applied to the staff salaries. But I kept it in the budget so that we didn't have to go make all the changes.
I think that's just where it was kept, and now, since this one percent's in there, it just remained in there, and it didn't change, but it's something else now, yeah, good.
Popped out.
Correct, good. Yes, Rick?
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a couple concluding things, I'll make it within fifteen seconds here, maybe seventeen. First of all, two commitments that we make to you, regardless of the passage of this policy statement called the budget. Number one is, if we don't need to spend it, we won't, we're four percent below what was budgeted last year, we will make every effort to find every efficiency we can along the way, so unless we need to spend it, we won't. And number two is, most importantly, if we don't have the revenue coming in, we won't spend it. And we have no choice but to return a surplus every year, that is not a product of overtaxation or anything else than a legal necessity. We can't go in the red, so you will see a surplus, as long as we abide by those two principles. And lastly, what I want to do is say, I feel very fortunate to serve with a staff that is so very professional, and employee team that is so productive, and I just feel privileged to have served with them, and once again, they just are an asset to this community, and hope they know how much I appreciate what they do, and I know that you have expressed the same thing, and so, we'll go on working very hard for you.
Thank you, Rick, I feel the same way. Thanks, Council, I will just mention before we adjourn, is Memorial Day on Monday, nine o'clock, at the memorial, the Veterans Memorial in Fountain Park, so come one, come all, and wear your red. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor indicate the saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.